All right, good evening, everyone. We call the January twenty fifth work session to order. And I will entertain a motion to consider the work session and regular meeting agendas.
Well, good evening, Mayor Claffey.
And members of council.
Good evening.
I move to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas as presented.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I have a second, Mr. Estesker. Congratulations, Mr. Estesker.
Captain man.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. And the first item on our work session agenda tonight is the Joint City Council School Board Budget Work Session. And I'm glad to see we have the school board here in light. And I understand you probably need to have a meeting called for all your members since you all are present. So, Ms. McCurdy, I'll give you the opportunity.
Joint work session to order. We have a call, so we're good.
Very good. Very good.
Okay.
Boar.
I think Dr. Garrett Smith, School Superintendent, is going to kick us off. And this is kind of the official kickoff, I guess, of budget work sessions that will go through the end of April, at which point you all will actually adopt a budget. And we'll present a budget at the end of March, at the second meeting in March. So, Dr. Smith, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Beauregard. I appreciate it. Good. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Claffey, Vice Mayor Darby, members of City Council. It's nice to be here. I wanted to start off just acknowledge if people didn't know that this, the city and school finance departments meet every week. We meet every Wednesday at two o'clock. It's a structure we've had in place back to last year. And so, we, we'd like to have that there because we, everybody comes with a problem solving mindset and because we have it there. If we need members of different city departments for special questions that we have as we're working through the budget, or if we need department heads from the school side or principals or anything like that, we know we always have this Wednesday at two, and we can work through all these issues together. So, I just wanted to acknowledge Jesse Moyer and her team up in the city finance department. They've been great to work with. And we've, and, and so, you know, we've had our number from the city for our budget back to November. And that's great, you know, we, that didn't happen before we had Jesse in the position. And like always, we're going to plan to come in with a level budget. The schools aren't looking to add any new positions this year. Our one priority in our budget is to wait and see what raise the state's going to give teachers and to make sure we can, you know, match that raise. So, that's really our priority. So, our contribution from the city is up eight percent according to our revenue share agreement. But on the state side, it is a complete unknown right now. The governor sent his proposed budget to the General Assembly. And, you know, if you read the articles about what happened, there were comments like this proposal was dead on arrival. So, we expect to see significant major changes to the governor's proposed budget, which will then go back to the governor, and then he'll veto some of those changes, and then they'll go back to the General Assembly. So, we see a lot of back and forth coming over the next several months. I'm afraid it's probably going to drag on. And we won't really have any hard numbers to report from the state side for our budget for quite some time. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. In the governor's proposed budget, as far as teacher raises, it was kind of surprising because it's a biannual budget, and he put in there a one percent bonus for teachers for next year, and then a two percent raise the following year. So, you know, that's coming on the heels of, over the last two years, in the state, teachers got a twelve percent raise. You know, and so, I, now we're coming back with a two percent raise over two years. So, it's just, like I said, it's just kind of, kind of all over the place there. But I did want to talk about a couple of things that we're working on and make sure we got everybody up to speed on things. So, the first thing I want to talk about is our childcare program. We've gotten a lot of recognition. I asked Ms. Beauregard, just send you guys some articles from a visit we had recently from legislative representatives and the Virginia School Board Association. That went very, very well. You know, they're looking for innovative programs that they want to try to reciprocate in other places. And we've used federal funds for the last few years to provide free childcare for staff. And it doesn't matter, you know, what your position is, you just have to be full time. So, bus driver, principal, teacher assistant, you have an opportunity to take advantage of our childcare. And the way it's worked is if you have a three or four-year-old, and you are city or school staff, then you can attend our excellent preschool program over at Dixon. And if you have a kinder, and the way that works over there, they actually have a before piece. So, teachers can drop off their children in time to get to work. And then an after-school care piece, so teachers can finish up whatever meetings they have before they go pick up their children. So, that's kind of how it works for the preschool. And then we work with Parks and Recs with the Heart Department to provide childcare for kindergarteners through sixth graders. And those are housed at our three elementary schools. And basically, we've been using federal money to make that payment for staff so that, so that we have that free childcare available. Again, it's open to city and school staff. To this point, there have been a lot more school staff members taking advantage of it than city staff. But we know that that money's running out after this year. And so, we've been working closely with the city on, on a solution. And staff will have to pay a fee on the city and school side to keep it going. But we think we can offer a reduced fee and a really high-quality childcare. John Venn loves this idea because we see it as a recruitment tool. So, right now, city staff, just like school staff, can access our preschool. City staff, children can access our after-school care. So, I talked to Ms. Beauregard about this and talked to the board Monday night. What we'd like to do next is open up a special permission for any city staff to bring their children to Stanton City Schools. We, again, we see it as a great, as a great recruiting tool. And our first step would be for Mr. Van to put out a survey to city staff and kind of see how much interest is out there and parents who may want to do that. So, it makes sense to us to open it up. It'll help our enrollment right now in Stanton City Schools. The special permission isn't open to anyone who doesn't live in Stanton unless you're school staff. So, the only change is going to be unless you're a school or city staff, then you can bring your children to our schools for free, no tuition. So, we're excited about that. And, and, you know, when we did our research in the pandemic, everybody kind of stopped working, right? And people were saying, well, you know, the benefits are too high. People will come back when the benefits go away. Well, the benefits went away, and people still didn't come back. And, you know, through our research and study, childcare is really the big barrier for a lot of people coming back to work, especially working mothers. And so, if we can take that barrier away, this, and this makes, you know, the city of Stanton, to me, like, like very enlightened and forward-thinking that we have a perk that's very attractive to potential employees, and that they'll look at Stanton and, and appreciate that we're kind of, kind of like a full-service opportunity here. And I think it kind of builds that feeling of family. You know, within the school division, you work here, your children attend here, you know, we take care of them after school and all those things. So, so we're really excited about that. Jesse's still running the exact numbers on what the cost will be, but it will be far cheaper than what's out there now. We hear stories about families paying as much for childcare per month as they pay for their mortgage. You know, it's a very limited supply now and very high demand. And families are just having trouble finding childcare. So, go ahead.
I feel like I'm ambushing you with this, but, you know, as, as a parent with, with kids in the heart program, and then also the summer, you know, one separate thing, it almost, you know, you have to get there early. You almost feel like you have to camp out to be sure you get a spot. Sometimes you're on the waiting list. And I think, you're like you were saying, childcare is a big part. I mean, not just for employees here, but for people in the city. Is there any room for expansion in our after-school?
Well, I can tell you what happened the first year we did it, Brad. Steve Tache was out sick, and he had some, like, college-age interns, and people were, like you said, lining up to come in. And they said, well, it's going to fill up fast. You know, all the teachers' kids are taking all the spots. And so, that got people all fired up, and my phone started blowing up. We added more staff, and we added another location. So, we're, we're going to try our best to accommodate folks who need it. And, and we've been able to, like, the, the demand's there. We're not worried about being, being able to fill it up. And one of our goals has been to eliminate the waiting list for preschool and for childcare. So, we're trying to expand all the time. We've added a preschool class for the last three years consecutively to try to get rid of that waiting list.
Right.
And that helps us open up more slots for staff children, too.
Okay, thanks.
Garrett. Historically, that preschool program, I mean, it was a waiting list a mile long. I mean, it was years for people to wait to get their kids in that.
Yeah, and it's gone. We've been able to eliminate it now, which was, you know, a big initiative for us. With the ultimate goal, if we had the same amount of preschool sections as kindergarten sections, that's a whole extra year of formal schooling for children in the city of Stanton. And that, that's a really nice target to go after, I think.
Garrett, correct me if I'm wrong, but you, you talked about Jesse's running the numbers, but y'all have, I know the last, before, because of this program, y'all use is the Esser Fund? How much of the Esser Funds have you used on a yearly basis for this program? So that we kind of know, if you use this many, we can kind of expect that amount or maybe more?
Yeah, I think the total cost in, Brad, is it like somewhere between thirty and fifty thousand dollars?
For the preschool was costing us a little bit less, about forty thousand dollars a year. The after-school program.
I'm sorry, how much? So, you're right at about a hundred thousand, fifty and fifty, somewhere in that ballpark, ninety?
Yeah.
Am I also correct that the, that this program was going to end basically this year, and then the administration decided, well, we'll go do it for one more year?
Well, yeah, the money runs out this year, but we thought it was so important to keep it going, the positive feedback we've gotten from families, that as a central office team, it was one of our major projects to get done before the end of the year. And obviously, you know, people are already asking, it's late January, they're trying to figure out childcare for next year. We think we can roll our information out about how to, how to register tomorrow, as early as tomorrow. We've been working real hard on it. And lots of, you know, lots of things to figure out, lots of different little obstacles, but we've been able to work through them again. You know, with the help of Chris Tuttle and Steve Tation, Parks and Recs, with the help of the finance team, with the help of Kristy Palina, who's the new principal over at Dixon. It's just, and just all of us working together.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Garrett, this is not a popular question, but it's something I feel like I need to bring up because I've heard it from other teachers. And as a teacher myself, when I was hired in school systems, and I would say, oh, I don't need to sign up for the insurance because I'm on my husband's insurance, the HR person would be like, oh, my God, you're awesome. You know, they're thrilled because it was going to cost less to hire me. And so, it's a perk that I wasn't able to take advantage of. There are teachers who are not able to take advantage of, for example, this childcare. Or, again, don't take advantage of the insurance or other things that are offered by the, by the city schools. Is it possible to think about, or are you thinking about other perks for folks maybe like my age who are hoping to retire at some point and, and kind of attracting?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, long-term teachers?
That's a really, that's a really good question. Yet we just, we just changed the leave policy. So, this is another recruitment tool, and, and John Venn spearheaded this. So, for years, and you know this, Michelle, what teachers get at the end of their career for a sick day? You know what you get cashed out? Twenty dollars. Twenty dollars per day is what teachers get when they retire for a sick day. So, why wouldn't teachers take it day off, right? It's not worth, you know, twenty dollars or a day off. It's, so it didn't make a lot of sense to us, and we wanted to proactively get at the substitute cost because those are going up, just like the cost of doing business everywhere else. So, John can give you more of the details. But essentially, the way we have it set up now, you can get your per diem, what you make as your daily rate, for twenty-five percent of your sick days, up to ten thousand dollars. So, we just changed that. The board just approved it recently. So, so now, if you're working in Stanton City Schools and you hold on to some sick days, you can walk out with a ten thousand dollars, you know, prize on your way out. And we thought people would keep their sick days for that amount of money. So, that's kind of what we landed on. So, that's one of the other perks that we do. You, you know, the other things probably for some of the teachers you're talking about might not matter so much, but it's, we have free breakfast and lunch for all the kids. We have free Chromebooks for every child that attends Stanton City School, free internet through our hotspots. So, it's a, there are a lot of things that I think we have that are, are good recruitment tools.
Question on the, on the free lunch. I mean, how much is subsidized by the state or federal? And how much does the city stand at to pick up?
It used to be, in the past couple of years, it was like ninety-five to five. But we were worried that we might not make our mark this year, so we kind of backed it down. So, now it's like eighty-twenty. So, the feds are paying for eighty percent of the free lunch. And then our school nutrition department takes the other twenty percent. So, we get eighty percent reimbursement on every meal now.
So, how much does the twenty percent end up costing the Stanton school system?
I can get that number for you from, from Ms. Warren. But, you know, that, that's kind of a, the way the budgets are set up, the school nutrition budget is, is almost completely separate from the rest of the school's budget because it's almost all federal money.
Now, when you do that program in the summer, where I know there's a lot of food passed out when we're not?
Summer feeding.
Yeah. Now, how does that work?
We basically, we prepare meals at one site, and we go to different neighborhoods. And the student, we, we set up usually like at the apartment office in apartment complexes, and the children come down to receive their meals. We usually have fun stuff for them, too. We just want to make sure that the students have access to healthy food in the summer because a lot of times they don't. So, that's something we've been doing for several years, feeding the children, you know, around the, the whole the summertime and school year and everything. The only time we don't do it is like winter break and stuff like that, Thanksgiving break. But we, but we still send food bags home for those vacations, so they can leave at home with a food bag. But that, that's, that's one that, you know, kind of worries me when winter breaks get long, students without access to healthy food and things like that. So, it's just, it's, nobody's working. So, it's, it's a tough one to, to get at.
Garrett, is that, are those monies separate from the Esser Funds, or are they ending as well?
No, those are separate.
Are they going to be ending?
Uh, no.
The money used for the school, I mean, for the morning, the breakfast and?
It's called the, the community eligibility provision, and we worked real hard to qualify for it. You know, I was a principal back when a new kid would come to school, and even if that child had free lunch, the paperwork wasn't in yet. And so, the cafeteria staff would hand them a plain brown bag with a government cheese sandwich in it. So, imagine how hard it is. You're already a new kid in the school, and you got to get humiliated by getting a government cheese sandwich in a brown paper bag, and then looking around and seeing who, who am I going to sit with today at my new school? So, we worked really hard to get rid of that stigma and level the playing field for all the kids. We think it's so important that kids are able to eat for free.
Further questions?
I got one other topic, if you guys don't mind. Okay. So, I also want to talk about our Shelburne Middle School project.
Wonder when that was coming up.
So, you guys, the last time I was here, I was saying, you know, price tag on that thing, like ten, eleven million dollars is where we were. But I know you guys have your own construction project going on. The costs per square foot have gone crazy. So, now school construction's about five hun, almost five hundred dollars a square foot. When we built Stanton High, it was under three hundred. So, we, we, we keep waiting for the cost to come down, but they don't. And our architect has let us know that this Shelburne project realistically is going to cost more like fifteen million. So, we have applied for a school construction assistance program, CSAP grant, through the Virginia Department of Education for up to five million dollars. We'll find out in March or April if we get that grant. And if we get that grant, it's beautiful. We're set. We got the money to do everything there. If we don't get that grant, then we're going to have to cut things out of the project. So, if you remember, we're renovating the, the old classrooms downstairs where the maintenance shop was, the classrooms above that have never been finished. So, six extra classrooms, including two science labs. And then we had an addition on the other side. So, basically, the renovated spaces would take precedence over any new construction if we can't afford it. And that's the order that we would have to go in. But I've also, you know, in conversations with the city, we understand that, you know, a bond's being floated for the JDR courthouse. And I've asked, requested if a bond's being floated, if it's, if you consider a little wiggle room for the schools as a backup plan in case we don't get this grant, we would greatly appreciate it. So, we've had those discussions, you know, as well. If the state is looking for a construction project that's ready to go, and they need to disperse these funds because they haven't dispersed them all, we're going out for bid. I wish Chad was here, maybe even tomorrow. You know, we've, we're through the design phase. We've met biweekly with the architect over the past year. We're ready to start construction this summer. And so, so if that's what they're looking for, like a project that's like teed up and ready to go, then we should be a real attractive grant applicant to them. So.
Would you be able to start right now without the?
Yeah, we have enough to do the renovation part.
Okay, that's good news.
We do. But I want, we want the whole thing, obviously.
Yeah, of course. No, I, absolutely. But it's like you see the momentum going and maybe looks more attractive.
And that was, you know, those were really the two big items I wanted to talk about since, you know, that's so nebulous with the state budget. There isn't much to report. I just wanted to update everyone on those two projects and what we've been working on together and the discussions we've been having with city staff.
In our current fiscal year that we're, well, we're six months into it. I know we, we put a budget together last, last spring, and, you know, we signed off on it in April. When did you all finally find out how much money you were getting from the state?
What was it like?
September.
September, yeah.
It was actually September.
Yeah, we were two months into school. Yeah.
Yeah.
We've never seen anything like it.
Also, the, the, the new budget proposal that the governor introduced also had an amendment for this year's budget before we even, you know, finished the year. So, they want to pull some funds out of school.
So, how much money are you in limbo on? You know, how much do you know you have, and how much are you out, you know, waiting?
We know exactly what we're getting from the city. Honestly, I have no idea what we're getting from the state right now. But everybody's in the, everybody's in the same, but federal ends up making up about five percent of our total budget, and that should be, that should be steady. We anticipate that to be steady for us.
Because the vast majority of your money comes from the state, correct?
So, for us, it's, and our composite index has changed. It's about, the city pays about thirty-eight percent, and the state picks up the rest. And then, and then there's like a, you know, a few small percentage points of federal that comes in. But that federal money's, you know, tagged very specifically for what you can use it for.
With respect to the budget, the, the federal money's neutral because we,
Yeah.
we have our budget. Here's what we're going to spend in federal programs, and that's what we plug in as our revenue number. So, it just zeros out. So, it's zero sum on the overall development of, you know, balanced budget.
If I recall correctly, the, the Shelburne project was going to be funded with overruns from prior years?
Some overruns, some contributions from the city, some Esser money. Yeah, all those things have been kind of combined in there, a little bit of CIP money. And then our guys, our, our, our maintenance department, you guys have heard me say this before, they're so skilled and they work so hard. They, they do a lot of the work themselves. You know, they're, they're clearing out the basement over there at Shelburne now. They took the stage out of the cafeteria to make the cafeteria bigger and refinish that. So, when we're doing as much of the work ourselves as we can, I think you guys might know on the Montgomery Hall Tennis Court Project, we still had money left over from the high school because of the wizard, Jean Colvin, and the way she financed that project. But the way we were able to make that under budget was Earl McCray and his guys did all the demolition on the tennis courts. And then we borrowed, you know, some heavy equipment from Public Works, and that helped us do it. And we hauled it all out of there, and that kept us under budget to get the tennis courts. The last thing we're waiting for are the lights, and that's tied in with several city projects. They all got lumped together to lower costs. So, you know, everyone's been great to work with. And, and, and that's how we try to keep costs down by just doing the work ourselves. Our maintenance guys are up at this Evers property now, you know, fixing that up as they do all their other work. But we don't, we don't own it yet. We lease it. And we're paying monthly, and those payments go towards the final purchase price. So, we're extending that lease for now and working towards buying the entire property at some point.
And how much is, how much is your monthly leasing payment going on?
I think it's like, is it like a year? Yeah, it's like seventy-five hundred a month, I think. Yeah, everything costs a lot. Yeah.
Right, seventy-five.
Yeah.
Eleven hundred.
Yeah. And, and everybody knows the history of, you know, trying, trying to find a maintenance facility and operations.
Well, how's that one working for you?
How's it working? It's, well, we actually can have our buses, you know, undercover for our bus mechanics to work on, which is great. They're working on them out in the elements, you know, on a gravel parking lot at Parks and Recs. So, so that's really helpful. And it's, you know, if we, if we owned it, we would fix it up real fast. You know, we, we could, we need to add power. We need to add heat. You know, there are some other things that, that we could do there. But it's kind of dicey to do that when you're only renting the place and you don't own it.
As far as your bus fleet goes, how is it aging? I mean, how many do you replace a year? What, what's the?
What do we put? Fifty thousand in the CIP every year for bus replacement?
Yeah, and bus prices have gone up. It's, we're, it's pretty much once a year.
A year, one a year?
Our bus fleet's in pretty good shape, and we have, we have a few spares. And unlike a lot of places, we've been able to keep our, our staff, our staff there and, and work through that. So, you know, you see in some other neighboring communities where they have like walk-only zones. You see a lot of it in Charlottesville and Albemarle especially, where they just, they just don't have enough drivers to, to transport all the kids to school. So, that, that became kind of a controversial topic in some of our neighboring school divisions. But so far, so far, we've been able to maintain our staff.
Because we, we're used to it in Augusta County, seeing the signs out that.
Right, to, and, and triple runs and things like that. You know, my wife teaches in Augusta County. They, yeah, there's double, triple runs. It takes hours for the children to get home some days.
Any other questions from council?
Okay, maybe we can do that after. Mayor Baldwin.
Ms. Beauregard, any comments, questions?
No, sir.
Question?
I agree with Dr. Smith that, I mean, I'm, I'm happy with the formula and how it's been they've been able to get their number really early. So, that's always, that's been very helpful.
It sure is.
Obviously, there's some big decisions to be made coming up. So, and we'll, I'm sure we'll hear more about their budget as we get into budget season in the next couple of months.
And, and for us, you know, the bottom line in schools is always the bottom line. It's student achievement. And we've been making great gains in student achievement relative to the rest of the state. So, we've been moving up the charts. There's a measure that we use that comes from Dr. Matt Hurt, the Comprehensive Instructional Program in Southwest Virginia. And the way he, his formula is he takes every SOL test in every grade, every subject, you know, combines them all together. combines them all together and comes out with a pass rate and a, and a state ranking. So when we joined, probably a year after I got here, we were, there are a hundred and thirty school divisions, a hundred and thirty-one school divisions in the state. We were like a hundred and fifth on those scores. Last year we were forty-fifth and we're moving up every year. So we're, we're coming for whoever's in front of us. And I don't think there are any local school divisions in front of us, if any.
Would be one of my questions. So you're still using that Southwest Virginia model?
And, and you know what that cost is, Mark? It hasn't changed, two dollars per student per year. So it's, and they do all our data crunching, our benchmark tests, our pacing guides for that cost. So that's been, that's been a bargain.
Yeah. Does school board have any questions for us or comments or?
If you do, could you come up to the mic or the, the, the tables are miked as well? If somebody wants to, so that people online can hear, hear you as well. I have a couple and then I'll pass it to, I think, no, okay, she doesn't want to. All right. Couple of questions that we have, have you heard, as you heard from Dr. Smith, almost forty percent of our budget comes from you guys. Our budget from you guys is also a part of a revenue share agreement. So I was wondering if you guys have anything in the economic development department that is coming, that is going to bring more revenue to the city? Or are we still kind of at a standstill or is it?
At this point, we're still at a standstill.
Okay. So we don't have those to look forward to yet. Another thing for student achievement for this Shelburne project, the part that we're going to cut is actually kind of one of the important parts for student achievement. Shelburne is the oldest building in our fleet. It was built with bombs in mind. If you were a seventh grade teacher at Shelburne, especially in the science department, you were crammed into a small room with no windows in the center of the building. It's not a lot of science experiments happening when you shove another twenty-four kids in that room with you. The addition to Shelburne is important for education and for our kids because it'll give the teachers a, a bigger space that they can move into. That means that all of the seventh grade science kids can all go into this space and they can have the, the space to actually learn with modern technology and to do labs and things which we can't do right now. So I know that on paper, it sounds great to cut this out and we can just stay under budget. But again, we mess up the future, which is how we keep ending up here. We always just want to cut corners and kick the can, which I know that wasn't this particular council, but it's been decades of it happening, which is why we now all of a sudden have a bus garage need and CTE classrooms and no space. And you're still paying on renovations that happened twenty years ago that weren't even designed to last as long as the bond. So you're still paying on a bond for a renovation that's now up again and needs more work. So I hope that you guys will take the time to consider adding us to the bond in case our grant doesn't go through. For grant does go through, you just feed it back into the bond. Okay.
And, and, and my part is, is short. And first of all, I want to definitely thank you all for the, the change in the revenue share agreement. I was a, a big part of, you know, kind of getting the community to support that and I appreciate that change. It's been a huge benefit for our schools. It's made things a lot easier for us to know where we're starting from. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. As you, as some of you know, I know Brad and Michelle know that in the general assembly, there is a proposed bill in the Senate which would give a one percent sales tax if a referendum was approved by the city of Stanton. It's passed some hurdles and I, my question to you all is because we're a little bit at an impasse here with school construction, you can see we have needs that are coming up. This would be a way to raise revenue without having to, you know, use money from sales, from, excuse me, from property tax reassessment or increases. Would that be something that the council would join school board in, you know, sending letters of support to our legislators?
But Kristen, could you explain it to everybody the way you explained it to me? Because it, you made it sound more equitable or more just easier on everybody.
Right, well, there were some articles that came out that talked about, you know, the price of a, of a fifty million dollar school building and how if we pass that cost on to homeowners, it would raise property tax assessments by about ten percent per dollar. Is that the right way to say it? So ours are ninety-two or ninety-seven percent. What did you all decide? Ninety-seven cents, I mean. So that in, in order, eighty-nine, okay. So in order to pay for that renovation, the taxpayers would have to have their costs raised by ten cents. If we did the sales tax, then we would raise money through tourists coming. The average Stanton resident would not see that same cost passed on to them. It would be shared more across the region. So they wouldn't feel it in their, in their pocketbooks as much as if we passed it along to homeowners. Is that what you meant?
Yeah, the way, that's how you explain it. Like people come here to eat, come here to stay.
Right, right. This is a sales tax and it's only one cent or one percent, I believe. So it is also something that it would go to a vote by the residents of Stanton. So if they didn't want it, it's a referendum. If they didn't want it, they wouldn't approve it. So it kind of takes the pressure off of council. It takes the pressure off of school board and puts it on to the voter. So it seems like a win-win. It's got bipartisan support. So my question is, I'm trying to, to advocate a little bit more to the state. So I feel like it would be a stronger vote of support if we could send some sort of joint letter when it gets to the desk of Governor Youngkin, which it likely will. Would that be something you all would think about?
I would talk about it because I just, I like that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
It hasn't come, come up.
Right, there's a very good chance it will. It's already, I mean, it's, it's got bipartisan support. It's in the Senate right now. It's, it's, it's been brought up before and it's had, you know, good, good success in the, the localities that it's been adopted in. So, yeah, we'll, we'll circle back to it.
Just a question. So it would kind of save the school system from having to always ask for money for capital projects?
It would put that money every year into a fund for those projects. So as long as they're school construction related, you probably know more than I do, Brad, but.
Just go into an escrow account, basically. Sit there until you had a project or you had enough money to.
Yeah, and I think it, it would pay down, if we needed a bond, it would be used to pay down the bond every year as well. So you could use it for roofs, you could use it for parking lots, you could use it for, for whatever construction cost you need, a new building. So, but it would be a constant revenue stream as opposed to us saying, hey, we're here again. It's ten years later, we need this new building, so let's, let's talk. It's just always there.
And the local taxpayer would not be hit with that one percent or they would?
Well, it's a sales tax. So if they're out shopping, they would have, it would, things would cost more. But we'd also be getting the revenue from people coming in from other localities. It wouldn't just be a Stanton burden, like it would be if it was, if a property tax raised.
Are there any communities around us yet? Do you know of that it tried?
Not around us because it's a special exemption. Certain communities are already adopting it, but they've had to have been approved by their legislators. So I, I'm trying to remember some of the names of the towns, but in almost. Yeah, yeah, in almost every locality, it's been a success that's adopted it.
Thank you.
All right, any, any further questions from council? Nothing further from school board? Well, we always appreciate having y'all come and it's always good to get the update. Thank y'all very much for everything you do.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. You guys.
Let's get ready, let's get ready for budget season.
Yay, budget season. Yeah, it's like, you know, it, it seems to make sense to me, like, instead of your monthly mortgage going out of your house.
All right, that brings us to our next item on the work session. And it's the discussion of the Pathways Program of the Augusta County Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Ms. Bogart?
I'm going to go up to the podium. Um, first I'm going to ask council member Woods to read a statement.
I hereby recuse myself for participating in a pathways program discussion pursuant to the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act as I am an employee of the pathways program. So I'm going to leave the diocese and I'll be down below.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. So since council last discussed this, which was last fall, I've met with Chief Williams, who's here, Commonwealth attorney Jeff Gaines, I've talked to Dave Irvin of Public Works. Obviously, I've talked to Caleb Kramer of the Augusta County Commonwealth Attorney Office and actually attended a board meeting in December of the Pathways Program. So just to review, their ask is that the city join the Pathways Program with the understanding that they already have infrastructure, materials, deliverables and procedures in place. If we do join the program, they like a formal agreement between the city police department and the Commonwealth attorney to have them start sending cases to the program. A few words about, I asked Caleb a bunch of questions. I mean, he was very, very helpful in answering them. So the program is still fairly new. It's only been around since I think twenty eighteen and in twenty twenty-one, they received an extension of the grant that they received. Sorry. Let me put that up there, hopefully it won't fall. So they are still a little new as far as having an evidence-based evaluation process to measure its effectiveness. They do continue to build that up. We talked about that a lot to demonstrate that the program is having the desired effect. Per Mr. Kramer, their cases are not quite mature enough yet for a two-year recidivism study. But he did tell me that no program graduates have recidivated after graduating from the grant expanded program that occurred in twenty twenty-one, as far as they are, as far as they understand. They do put on their website, however, several studies that have been done to, to overall talk about the effectiveness of these types of programs. But it takes a while to, one is a ten-year study done in Texas. So it does take a while to actually establish the effectiveness. Same with the quantitative benefit to the community, which we talked about at that board meeting. They are working on how they get that analysis. So these are all things they're working on, which is great. That would be very helpful to understand that a little bit better. As far as the funding, the funding is mostly grant-funded, except for the portion that the county pays for the litter pickup, their share. And those grants cover core operations. Now, their goal is to eventually sustain the program without grant funding and that would be done through fundraising. I think they're going to start doing Medicaid billing for, for their cases, case management and of course, local participation, they are hoping. They've also expressed interest in receiving a portion of the opioid abatement funds. But as you know, you've been made aware, this is a regional collaboration and there's a visioning process happening right now that the region received a planning grant to do this and they've hired a consultant to do this work. So pathways will be invited to be part of that visioning process, as will other interested groups and agencies. But there are no plans to distribute those funds until that process has been completed or to even have an application process. I wanted to make sure I included Public Works, of course, since we've had a transition. So Mr. Irvin, Mr. Kramer, and I did speak about this, what Public Works's role would be. Right now, of course, they're picking up litter in the county, so they work with VDOT. So they'd have to coordinate with us very closely. So that was a good conversation that we had this week with Mr. Kramer. I did hear yesterday that they've activated their five oh one C three status, so that is also good news. That means, and this came up at the board meeting, that outside groups will likely participate in the program or will be able to, such as the rescue squad. So that is, that is good news for them. And while Waynesboro has been approached, the police chief and Commonwealth attorney have not committed beyond initial conversations. So, but they continue to try to reach out to them. But right now, it doesn't look like they're going to, they're going to partner in this anytime soon. So in terms of what is expected, if the city were to participate, the initial request would be ten thousand dollars to expand the city litter pickup in the city and that would be to add a day. And currently, they do a pickup two days a week in the county. So that's a year, ten thousand a year. Longer term, once the grant funds expire, the city would be requested to support some portion, which is yet to be determined, of a total budget, which is currently around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This would be contingent on the county continuing their support of the program, of course. And again, that dollar amount's not exact, but what they're looking to do is basically move away from the grant-funded model and have localities fund any gap in funding. But that's kind of, that's a bit of an unknown at this time, but their current budget is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. In speaking to Mr. Gaines also, he's expressed concern that there's, this is one more program that his office has to do, which is basically tracking cases, that he can't absorb another program and not be compensated. He told the chief and I that in the short term, his office could probably track cases, but he would want at least a new part-time paralegal or at best a full-time prosecutor to help with this. They have other types of programs that he feels they're not, which they're not compensated on by the state or the, or the locality, such as therapeutic docket and DUI court. And he's not received any additional resources to do those tasks. So he is feeling a little bit of a stretch and being asked to do one more program. So this is probably the biggest cost. His office would be requesting anywhere between fifty thousand and a hundred thousand to add some type of part-time paralegal or prosecutor. And he wanted, he also mentioned to us that statewide, there are over fifty entry-level prosecutor openings. Usually there are three to four. So I'm not, he's not sure he could even recruit a prosecutor at this time. So I'm happy to answer questions. I know Chief Williams was here, is here. He can answer questions. So if you do have questions, because then we can talk a little bit about next steps and how you would like me to go forward.
Well, I guess that would be the next step. I mean, would this have to be in the, the budget proceeded, the proceedings that we would approve in April?
That would probably be my recommendation is we keep, if you're interested in us trying to pursue this or some aspect of this and maybe phasing something in, maybe we can look at that for the twenty-five budget. That would be the earliest I would certainly recommend that you all consider this. But the biggest cost obviously is Mr. Gaines. He's going to want a position. We can talk to him again in term, after tonight, in terms of, you know, kind of nailing that down a little bit more. But he, he's, he's pretty convinced that that's what he would need. Because he's not only got head, would have this program, but other programs are kind of stretching them a bit a little bit. So this, this might push them over a little bit, but that, that's the biggest ask frankly, as far as a budget ask.
And his positions, they're fully funded through us, the city, versus any income they get from the state.
This would probably be a locally funded position. We would not get any comp board reimbursement for this position. Yeah.
And do they have an idea of how, about how many participants would be? I mean, I guess it's hard to say.
It's hard to say.
Or do they have a cap? Do they have a?
I don't think there's a cap. I, I, I think it's hard, you mean, in terms of how many cases we might send them?
How many cases they might?
I don't, because I don't know if I have an answer to that.
Just kind of guessing on what the benefit to the city would be. So the ten thousand, I, I was trying to catch, I was taking notes, I was trying to keep up. But the ten thousand dollars for Public Works gives one day of trash pickup.
A week, a week?
Yeah. For, for participants to do trash pickup.
Fifty weeks a year.
Fifty weeks a year.
But now, do we have to supply the? Well.
So they have all the materials, they transport them, they supervise them. They, they, they do all that and they supply the people, obviously. We would tell them where to go and Mr. Irvin has identified some areas of the city that they could possibly go to. So they, they supply all those types of materials.
But there would be more benefit to these people who are participating than just doing this, I suppose, community service.
Yeah, they get, they have case management involved in this. I mean, there's a lot more to it than just litter. I mean, there is a litter component option, there is a litter, there's a litter pickup component. Like for instance, Blue Ridge Court Services will send folks just for the litter component. They're, they're not case managed at all. So they're looking to have us send folks that can be case managed and go through the whole program, graduate from the program eventually and then hopefully they won't reoffend. And so that's, that's what, that's the hope of Augusta County is to have us come on board. I think it will help them that they've activated their five oh one C three because it gives them more freedom to raise, to, to do fundraising and to go and, you know, I know Caleb talked about not going for grants, but you know, that's always an option in the future too for them.
Right.
As they get more data in terms of the effectiveness of the program, which they will need to demonstrate more at some point to even continue to achieve, you know, get grants through whatever resources out there.
Understand. But, but the overall goal of this is to keep people from being incarcerated, from keeping people from being. Or from being arrested.
I'm not sure many of them would actually ever be actually be in jail.
Right.
I mean, some, many of them are not even charged initially.
Right, right.
So, but the longer term goal hopefully is that these people, the folks will go through this program, will receive some wraparound services, do community service and then not offend again or not get into a more serious trouble in the future. And so hopefully it will improve their lives and that, I believe that's, that's the goal of their program is to make sure that does not happen.
Version program.
Yeah, well, precisely.
What?
Looking at Jim.
I reckon it's probably to Jim. I, I understood Waynesboro.
I, I understood Waynesboro PD evidently does not want, at this time, want to.
Well, what I, what I was told through Mr. Kramer was they've had initial conversations with them, but there's not been any follow-up from the city of Waynesboro.
Tell me, Jim, what the, what does this program entail for Stanton PD? What are y'all going to do with this program?
So it's a diversion program, obviously. So what you're trying to do is keep people out of the criminal justice system by doing that, and then hopefully, they, everybody has a, a better outcome. So not a lot. The, the referrals can be done by our officers, just like we do for community mediation and other things like that. It's not, it's not a real big lift for us. If the officers are passionate that, you know, this particular person, like, needs to be charged and needs to go through the criminal justice system, then they will be. I mean, the, the officer will have that option of, you know, this person is perfect for the diversion program, or this person may, or whatever else, but if they feel, you know, there's continuing circumstances and they need them to go through, whatever. So it started off mostly with misdemeanors, but it is, is elevated, there's even, they're doing some felonies and stuff, I think, now. And certainly, there's, there's some utility to diversion programs, no question about. The, the, the key, I think, is, you know, what do we have evidence-based that leads us to believe that this particular program is, is a, is a good diversion program, particularly when you're, you're talking about putting significant amount of funds in it, to, to me, when, when the manager and I spoke, that's, that's kind of where we're, you know. You can't just hope that it works, like, you need, you need to know that it works. And, and even getting future grant funds, you have to, you know, you have to prove that it's working, so. And, and I don't think they're there yet, from what we see.
Chief Williams, though, when you said we, they might be using or involving felons as well, they're not violent felons. These are just.
Oh, no, no, no. Like, when, when Mr. Gaines and, and when the three of us were talking, they were, like, residue cases of, of narcotics and things like that, yeah. Oh, no, we, we're not diverting armed robbers or.
Some people think of that.
Yes.
Yeah, some people think of that.
No, no, not all felonies are, are created equally at, at all. And, and some of them, they've had success, and certainly, there are places across the United States that, that have great success diverting nonviolent felonies. Absolutely.
I mean, I suppose there's a theoretical savings for us in not incarcerating people, you know, on that, but I mean, what other aspects of it could we look at as saying, like, does this in any way pay for itself? It's all theoretical.
Yeah, that's the quantitative piece I spoke to earlier, and they, they are, they have said they're working on a way to get that analysis. They don't have that analysis yet. I mean, so when you, when we, when I hear, like, oh, we're gonna save all this money, well, not really. I mean, so again, they, they are committed to working on that piece, but they just don't, that's a piece they just don't have quite yet.
Okay.
And we, and that was a discussion we had at the board meeting in December that I was able to be part of, so. I think they're hoping to hire or have some inter, they're hoping to get some help to do that, is what I remember from that discussion.
Tell me the advantage of the 501(c), and I understand people can make donations, but where do you anticipate getting donators? Who's gonna be, who's gonna be interested in this?
Face big grants with that, much better.
And also, in the board meeting I was in, I think there was a representative with the rescue squad there, and they said they could only participate if it was a 501(c)(3). So they're looking to have them also partner with Pathways. So they were very adamant that the 501(c)(3) had to be in place. So I don't. So because right now, it's running out of Augusta County. So they want to move away, they want to move away from that fiscal agency and become their own fiscal agent, kind of like an outside agency.
Right.
Yeah.
I would just, having in the past word for a 501(c)(3), it's the prerequisite for so many larger-scale grant programs that, like, if you, if you can't check that box, it's not even worth sending it.
Right.
So, I mean, I assume that's what they're going for.
Is that the model to be, like, standalone for this? I mean.
I don't know the answer to that. Sorry, I don't know. So what's the question?
Does Alice have anything she wants to add?
Yeah.
Since you worked for this program.
She's invisible.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, from, from the presentation in the past and all that, it sounds like a, a very interesting program to look at. I'm, I'm interested in, in it personally on that. It seems like a, a good thing that doesn't involve a whole lot of added work for our, our police department, which we don't want to do, and it could have better outcomes for people, you know, that aren't violent criminals, or, you know, a, a less serious blemish on, on their life as well.
Well, the fact that it keeps them from being charged.
Right.
Is, is, is big, because, you know, people can be charged, and it can be taken under advisement, but they're still in the court system, and they still have things they have to do to, to, to keep that from getting initiated by doing whatever this program says they have to do. I mean, that would be a benefit for a lot of people.
Yeah.
So the biggest piece to this, obviously, is Mr. Gaines is gonna ask for another position.
We're interested in the $10,000 number, or we don't know about the 60.
Well, I, I don't, I mean, we will talk to him again, but he was pretty adamant that he could not do this long-term without at least a part-time additional position.
That makes sense.
So.
She's already down. How many positions does he have now?
No, I can't.
I don't know off the top of my head.
I can't remember off the top of my head.
There's maybe five.
Yeah, it's five, yeah, it's five or six, I think.
Now, Augusta County, I mean, he, he's doing it full-time. They've got a guy, they got actually two, don't they?
So Caleb is pretty much full-time, and then they have Jack, who's the coordinator for the Pathways program itself.
So, I mean, you'd be a product of your success. Like, probably, you know, early on, I think, I think what, what Mr. Gaines was saying is, it, it wouldn't, you know, in the short term, we could probably do it, but you know, when five cases become 10, becomes 100, and you gotta manage all this, there's just no way.
Yeah.
And I, we, we totally get that.
I don't know what the breaking point is for him.
Right.
Either, so, but he, he was kind of coupling it with other programs that he's been asked to do that have not received any additional resources, and, and that's fair.
I mean, that's fair.
It's a lot, it's a lot on their office, so.
Well, do we have a head nod from, from the diocese? We want to continue to show interest.
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll continue the conversations. We'll, we'll continue to talk and, and reach out and talk to, to Mr. Gaines some more and.
Specifics.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
That's, that's, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, it's time to enter a closed meeting. I will entertain a motion.
I'll do it.
Thank you. Take one for the team.
All right, all right. I move to enter a closed meeting for discussion or consideration of disposition of publicly-held real property located on Pec Street, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3, and discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds for surveying services, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A29.
Well said.
Holy good.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Mayor Clavie, I'll second.
Mr. Kestner, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Clack.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, we are now in closed session, and we will return at 6:50.
Forty. That was definitely.
Mayor Claffey, I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed. And that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Council Robertson. Mr. Kessler, please call over.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claff.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and with that, I call to order the regular meeting of the Stanton City Council for January 25. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I am going to have a invocation moment of silence. It's up to me tonight, and I'm going to have a brief prayer if you would join me. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance during 2024. As we and city council members attempt to improve life for all of the citizens of Stanton. Let us be mindful of all who we represent and be good financial stewards of the blessings you have bestowed upon our fair city. Watch over us and guide us to do your will in all endeavors.
Amen.
All right, next order is the mayor's report. And it's been busy the last two weeks, so. We will be going to a retreat on February 9. And I am going to ask all counselors to come up with several items for our State of the City report. Now, it's January, it's time of the year for State of the Union, State of the State, and State of the City. We haven't done a State of the City on all years. But I think we need to concentrate on this. And I'm thinking it might be a good time to, it might be one of the topics when we have it scheduled in on the tentative agenda for the, at our retreat. But I am asking all counselors to come up with several priority items on a note card. Of what they see as needs of the city and also of successes. So just things that are obvious that come, this gives you two weeks to get ready for our retreat. And then we will be in a better position for our State of the City report. Let's see, since our last meeting, we had a nice snow on January 15th, and we got lucky and the roads didn't get too bad. But I want to thank Public Works for all they did. And further, the extra work they did doing a trash pickup on Saturday last week because they had to plow the streets of the first week. So that was impressive. The January 15th snow delayed the Martin Luther King event at Central United Methodist, but we had it on the 22nd. Vice Mayor Darby and Counselors Arrowood, Woods, and Campbell all joined me. We gave a proclamation. It was a nicely attended event. It was very pleasant. So this morning I attended an EDA meeting. And we were discussing a groundbreaking that attended on Monday out on Industry Way, which is part of the Green Hills Industrial Park. And if you're driving north on Route 11 through Verona and you look across the railroad tracks, you'll see that we have a fairly big site up there that's already had ground tore up on it. And there's a 40,000 square foot building underway right beside Balzer. And that is called Project X because we don't know what's going to go in there. But right beside that, there is another 60,000 square foot building that is being proposed and they're working on Balzer is working on that with Mathers Construction. And that's Project Y. So we are very pleased to report that there's progress out there. We just don't know what it is. But it was, it was interesting to see, and we discussed it this morning at EDA. On a sad note, this morning, we learned that we are losing our Stanton Development, Downtown Development Association, losing Greg Beam to Mount Jackson as Assistant Town Manager. And Greg was great. He's done a great job with Stanton Downtown, and we're going to miss him. We wish him well in his new endeavor, but we're going to be sad to see him go on. And I invite all here tomorrow at 1 o'clock for the Green Street Rededication Program that we're going to have. So stop on by tomorrow and see what we're doing with that. And that's it for the, 1 o'clock. Yes. And that's it for me. Do I have other items from members of council?
Yep, Mayor Claffey, I just want to give an update, please.
Certainly.
From the Library Advisory Board meeting last week. I wanted to let everybody know that there will be three openings coming up for the Library Advisory Board. If anyone out there in Stanton wants to serve their city on that board, that would be great. Also, there are openings for the Board of the Talking Book Center. So hopefully there are folks that are listening to this and will consider applying for those. You just go on the website and look for Boards and Advisory Committees, and you'll find that application there. Thank you.
Thank you. Normally, we have a lot of applications for the Library Advisory Board. I hope we get some more.
Definitely.
Mayor Claffey, I'd just like to share that I attended my first Regional Youth Commission meeting yesterday as council liaison. So very educational. That organization is led by the Office on Youth is doing some tremendous work. So excited to work with them moving forward as council liaison. And I thought it was particularly cool that they have a voting, a youth voting member for representing each jurisdiction. And I'd also like to say that Mr. Knight was also there yesterday evening, just getting to know what the regional youth commission does. So thanks.
Very good. Who else?
Well, oh, Mark.
No, no, go ahead.
A couple of things, let's see. For Historic Commission, the Liaison Historic Commission, there's things happening with the cable cabin, that log cabin towards the end of East Beverly there. There's a new owner on that that is interested in deconstruction, restoration, building it back as it is. It's in, you know, the years have taken a toll on that thing, but building it back, putting it back restored exactly as it is. That's a really important structure in our, it was immediately post-Civil War. It was 1869 was built. The property was purchased by Friedman in 1866, immediately post-Civil War on that too. So that's, you know, it's mostly chestnut logs, which.
Really?
Give you an idea, yeah, of the age of the thing. So that's, that's kind of exciting to hear that someone's moving forward with that. Also, just one thing, the Stanton farmers market continues on. The winter market is in the basement of the Manuel Episcopal Church there too. And they have all kinds of great stuff there. So, you know, you can, you can keep on supporting local growers.
Mayor Claffey, just to let everyone know, I guess two Saturdays ago. The mayor and his wife and myself and my husband attended the Stanton Augusta Rescue Squad Annual Banquet. And that was always, it's a nice event. It's always nice to catch up with the folks that do so much for our community and just wanted to give them a shout out.
All right. City staff is just being a little, just too diligent. They're finding errors along the way. So city staff discovered that there were some errors in terms of service to appointments. Made in December of 2021 to a number of volunteers that were appointed to start Terms of Service on January 1st, 2022. The nominations committee would like to provide the following amendments to correct those errors. And in one, the very first case, these will be corrected at our very next nominations committee to reappoint. So this event will be to amend the terms of service of Judge Robin Mayer, Peter Botner, Jeffrey Gaines, and Chris Hartless on the Blue Ridge Criminal Justice Board from ending December 31st, 2022. From ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty four to actually ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty three. So they have, their Terms of Service have now ended. They've got to be reappointed for another term. Also, to amend the Terms of Service of Jason Clark. On the Library Advisory Board from ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty six. To actually ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. And also the last one to amend the Term of Service of Alyssa McDonald. On the Recreational Advisory Commission from ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. It will actually end December thirty first, two thousand and twenty four, the end of this, this year. And that's all we have. Like I said, nominations committee will meet next month, and we will get that all sorted out.
Well, thank you for your throwing us and getting that straightened out for us. Appreciate that.
Our staff was just really digging.
Are we appreciating Mr. Kessinger's efforts there?
Yeah, yeah.
Good job. Thanks, sir. All right, any other further, further comments from members of council? All right, moving right along. The next item on our regular meeting agenda is the Consent Agenda. Per Council Procedure Memorandum Number fourteen is the policy of City Council to have routine non-controversial items placed on a consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. If separate discussion of an item is requested by any member of council, that item shall be removed and considered separately. Do any council members desire to remove any items from the consent agenda to be placed on the regular meeting agenda? Hearing that, do I have a, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor Claffey, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. A motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Arrowood. Mr. Kessinger, please call roll.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That moves us right along and brings us up to a consideration of the final plat for Red Oak Section Seven. Ms. Beauregard.
Mr. Rodney Rhodes will go through the side of this evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Claffey. City Council members, a pleasure to be with you this evening. In two thousand and one, City Council approved the Red Oaks Development, which is a planned residential development consisting of seventy seven lots. Before you tonight is the last section, which would create the final nineteen lots of that development. And would also create a new street to be named River Oak Drive. The city has approved construction plans for Section Seven, excuse me. However, the construction of the infrastructure has not been completed. Therefore, a bond in the amount of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars is required to cover the cost of the public improvements. Which includes a water line, sanitary sewer line, stormwater, street, including sidewalks. And the city has received this bond, which has been reviewed and accepted by the city's engineer. Would note that the proposed development meets the requirements of the city's zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. And in, and the final plat is in general conformance with the layout shown in the preliminary plat. At the December twenty one, two thousand and twenty three Plan Commission Meeting. On a four to zero vote, the commission voted to recommend approval contingent upon the city receiving a bond for the public infrastructure. And as I just noted, we have received that recently. So this plat is ready for approval and for recordation. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. This does not require a public hearing. Surveyor Daniel Hanson from Balls and Associates is, is here. If you have any technical questions for him about the final plat.
Questions from counselors. It's all pretty cut and dry, I believe. Yes. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Claffey, I move that council approve the final plat for Red Oak Section Seven as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Woods. Mr. Kessinger, please call roll.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
I am going to abstain, simply because my brother happens to be the general contractor for this project.
Understood.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Rodney. All right, that brings us to a modification of contract for Architectural, Engineering, and Related Services. For Design and Construction Administration of the City of Stanton Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court Facility. Ms. Beauregard.
Ms. Jessie Moyers, the CFO, will address this item tonight.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here before you with a procurement item. Staff is seeking approval from council. To accept modifications to the existing Mosley Architects contract that was signed in July of two thousand and twenty three. For Architectural, Engineering, and Related Services for Design and Construction Administration. Of the City of Stanton's Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court Facility. The proposed change is four hundred and ninety nine thousand, seven eighty six. Which exceeds the threshold set by the Virginia Procurement Act, requiring authorization of a public body. A funding source has already been identified for the C I, in the C I P Fund, which is our courthouse. Construction fund, and therefore, no additional funding is requested at this time.
Always like it when you say that. Questions? Counselors? Cut and dry again.
More or less. I mean, we should just clarify for the public. I suppose that this is just in the design and in the increased complexity of this courthouse that has instigated the, or that has caused this increase. But, well, okay, and I'll just keep talking. With that, I move to authorize the city manager to sign the Mosley Architects contract for additional services relating to the design of the J and D R courthouse.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Robertson. Mr. Kessinger, please call roll.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And that brings us to matters from the city manager.
Great, thank you. I have items tonight. I'm going to expand a little bit on what Mayor Claffey mentioned earlier, which is the Green Street redesignations, which will be in this room tomorrow at one P M. I just want to talk a little bit about what that redesignation is for. It's being championed by Colonel Melissa Patrick of Thomas Fields V F W Post seventy eight fourteen. And it will honor the memories of two African American war heroes from Stanton. Captain William Washington Green Senior, who was a Buffalo soldier and World War One officer decorated for heroism, heroism on the battlefield. And Captain William W. Green Junior, who was a Tuskegee Airman and Korean War veteran, who was decorated for his aerial exploits and heroism. This redesignation will honor these distinguished war heroes in addition to Nathaniel Green, a Revolutionary War hero. The ceremony will include a presentation from Colonel Patrick, remarks from Mayor Claffey. The recognition, the recognition of Green family representatives, and the presentation of a proclamation. Everyone is invited one o'clock tomorrow in this room. The second item is a VDOT public hearing that will take place on February twenty first from four to six P M. On the Shared Use Path on Richmond Avenue. This public hearing will take place at the Dairy Barn Lecture Hall at the Frontier Culture Museum. It's, this is about the Shared Use Path on Richmond Avenue at Crossing Way. This is a almost a point four or five mile long shared use path. Which would give pedestrians additional, additional safety and connectivity and improve access to transit facilities on a very busy multi-lane highway. For more details on this project, the public hearing, and other ways to submit comments. Visit VDOT's website at vdot dot virginia dot gov slash projects. There's also a story in the newsletter that was published on the twenty third that has a link that goes directly to that project, to their webpage. There's also an online survey on that webpage that you can take. The third item is that this week, the city received notification from the Virginia Department of Historic Resources. That the Stanton Coca-Cola Bottling Works located at seven oh nine North Augusta Street. Has been nominated to the National Register of Historic Places and inclusion in the Virginia Landmarks Register. As a certified local government, the Stanton Historic Preservation Commission is entitled to comment on the nomination. And they are expected to review the draft nomination at their February twenty seventh meeting and relay any comments and recommendations to the Department of Historic Resources. And as a reminder, City Council approved a rezoning of the historic property on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty three. To help facilitate the repurposing of the building for a microbrewery and tasting room. The next item I've talked about a couple of times is about our National Community Survey, which was, it is underway. It was sent to approximately three thousand randomly selected households. And you did, if you did receive a postcard, it should have a URL on it that you can complete. About a week after that, you should have received your paper copy of the survey that you can fill out and send back. We really encourage everyone to take a few minutes to fill this out. Because it will help the city, City Council, make some decisions going forward. In terms of how to best serve the residents of Stanton. But please don't share your survey link or the paper copy with anybody else. There will be a second option for providing feedback that is open to everyone in the community. That will open in mid-February, and more information about that will come out as it gets closer. Finally, Monday, February fifth is Transit Equity Day. The Bright Bus System is recognizing this day by operating fare free on February fifth. Transit Equity Day honors civil rights activist Rosa Parks, whose birthday is February fourth. That's everything I have this evening.
All right, thank you. And that brings us to Matters from the Public. This is part of City Council's agenda. Is designed for us to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matter from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk or online at the city's webpage. You are asked to familiarize yourself with those rules before commenting. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. Would anyone like to speak under Matters from the Public? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name's David Klinger. I live at one hundred Village Drive here in Stanton. And I've been asked by our two condominium associations. And the developer of the villages at Stanton to appear before you tonight. To see if we can begin to correct a safety issue in our area. I've only lived in Stanton for about a year. I moved here from Boise, Idaho. But my mother lived here in the nineteen twenties with her family, so I guess you could say my moving here is sort of like coming home a century later. Actually, I was at risk upon moving here of becoming Stanton's shortest term resident because of an accident that nearly happened. In the crosswalk connecting our neighborhood with downtown Stanton. It's the existing crosswalk at the entrance to the Blackburn Hotel property. Which is also on the Villages at Stanton complex. And that's on the other side of Greenville Avenue, just about a block north of Wright's Dairy Wright Restaurant. I was almost hit by a southbound vehicle while in that crosswalk. Two, two weeks later, as a new resident, I nearly caused a rear end collision. When a car did stop for me while in the crosswalk and the following car didn't. In talking with other residents of our community. I find that this is not really an isolated occurrence, but there have been other near misses. That have happened regularly in this crosswalk where pedestrians aren't totally being respected. So we feel that a safety upgrade is needed at this crossing before a tragedy does occur. We brought our concerns, we always like to approach the staff first before coming to you, and we had, have had some cordial. Communications with Stanton's Public Works Director, Mr. Johnson. And have met with your city engineer, Mr. Hart. And we now have a very good understanding of the upgrades to come in this area. With the future improvement of the Greenville Richmond Avenue intersection, which is going to become some sort of a roundabout. But these upgrades, many of which will improve public safety and downtown access. Are still probably two to three years out. We'd like to suggest that. In the interim, we address the existing safety issue. With several low-cost safety upgrades that might bring a measure. Of greater safety to this crosswalk for not only residents of Stanton. But visitors to the community who stay at that hotel and want to access downtown Stanton. We think that restriping of the crosswalk with reflective white paint is a needed improvement. We feel that upwriting the existing crosswalk signs is needed. They're leaning. And that perhaps exchanging them to newer and fewer signs. Might bring a greater measure of visibility to that crosswalk. And finally, installation of a solar-powered, on-demand pedestrian warning signal. That could be activated anytime a user is in the crosswalk. Would be a very welcome improvement, similar to what has been done. On the Johnson Street crossing there at the Farmer's Market property. We recognize that part of this safety problem is due to vehicular speeding on Greenville. In a thirty-five mile zone, and part of the safety problem is due to motorist behavior and respecting. People who are in crosswalks in the process of crossing. And deferring to them. But we do think that there is some modest upgrades in infrastructure that could begin to bring a greater measure of safety. Until a permanent solution arrives in the form of this new realignment and rotary at Greenville and Richmond. I'd like to. For the record, give you expressions of support from our two condominium associations. And from Mr. Robin Miller, the developer of the villages at Stanton. And I'll give this to Mr. Kessinger. We'd appreciate the opportunity to work with you, mayor and council. To, and the staff, to ensure that our Stanton residents safely remain Stanton residents. Thank you very much.
Welcome to Stanton, and we'll look into this.
It's good to have it on your radar screen, and that's, that's what we appreciate.
And we will. Check Ms. Beauregard's, check it out. Thank you very much.
Sir.
Appreciate hearing from you. Mr. Kessinger, do we have anybody online?
I have no one with their hands raised.
All right, would someone else like to speak? Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Claffey and members of the council. My name is Leslie Kip. I live at sixteen Church Street. Before I get started, there's, there's a couple of comments I'd like to make. They're not really pertinent to what I really want to say. But first of all, I would second what was just said here. And as, as, as the gentleman was speaking, I was thinking to myself, when I drive down there. I think one of the problems, me as a driver, I'm usually thinking, am I going to turn up Richmond Avenue? Or how am I going to get myself into the lane so I can turn up Johnson? And, and I don't know what can be done to just kind of make drivers more aware that there's actually an upcoming pedestrian crossway. But hopefully, there could be some kind of visual cues that would wake, wake us drivers up. Also, I wanted to. Also, I wanted to comment about the city council here. Given the confusion within the country right now, uh, the thought occurred to me that this council and me speaking here and others coming before the council, this is actually one of the freest forums in the country right now. And I would congratulate all of the members of this council for helping to maintain that. And I hope that going forward, we can do that because there's lots of places where people are either condemned or are afraid to speak up. And I, I do think that this council and this, this time is it's precious and the freedom of speech is protected here. So thank you very much. Now, I probably don't have any time left to say what I wanted to say tonight. But I wanted to read from you. It's a, it's a small paragraph from page 20 of the DEI report. It says, "While poverty and unemployment rates show important aspects of a community's economic vitality, they say less about the presence of living wages and affordability of basic living expenses. Local reports find that many of the employment opportunities that do exist within the city were hourly and lacking suitable benefits to, for workers." It goes on like this. Now, I will admit, or even agree, that this is a concern, but it is not a DEI concern and something that if you hire someone as a DEI, whatever advisor or whatever, this is something that would be totally out of their purview. Because what is being described here is a, a failure of national policy. If you've got an inflation rate of seven and a half percent, a family, uh, an income of $50,000 a year, you're losing $3,500. That, I mean, that's like someone comes into your house and steals it, you burn the money or whatever. And it's situations, it's a failure of national policy that is causing issues like this. And so, as I say, this is not a DEI issue, and I, it, it speaks to the lack of focus of this report, which then recommends that someone be hired to further the work. So I hope that you will keep this in mind going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessinger, any more?
Counselor, I have no one with their hands raised.
Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, counselors. I'm Caroline Motley. I'm a full-time, full, full-time student, and I work three part-time jobs. Two of these jobs include substitute teaching in Waynesboro, and I work for the SBOA, and I officiate basketball games in Harrisonburg, Stanton, Waynesboro, and in Augusta County. Two games I've had the privilege of working this season were Kate Collins versus Shelburne. And I've worked at both Kate Collins and both at, and at Shelburne. Last night, I worked at Shelburne. And I like to comment regarding the budget proposals that the school board brought up earlier regarding the renovation and potential addition. When I worked at Kate Collins, it was probably a month ago, and we showed up, they put us in this room. And this room, when I tell you, it was amazing. They had real tools. They had STEM technology. They had all these gadgets, these, I had no idea what it was. I went to school with technology. I didn't know what it was. And these kids are getting the opportunity to work with it every day. Last night, I went to Kate Collins. They put us in this room. And it was one of the rooms that, I forget her name, I'm so sorry, our school board member who mentioned. It was one of those dark dingy rooms, and I don't think I could have spent more than 15 minutes in there, and I definitely couldn't have spent an hour in there trying to learn health or anything. I don't think I could have learned anything in that room. To make it worse, when we went out on the court, they said, "Only use the one door that we sent you in, because the other one, there's water leaking from the ceiling. We don't want you to slip on it." At halftime, two middle school Shelburne boys come in to get this rack of balls from the room, and they go out this other door. I didn't catch them in time. One student slips face plants right onto the floor, and it just, the infrastructure of the building, th, these kids are in there every day, and it's a safety concern. Another thing to note is there's 15 to 20 desks in this room, and there's 30 students being put in this room every day. There's one smartboard on this side of the room. Those students way over there, they're not going to be able to see this board. They're not going to be able to focus on this board. So I think it's a major concern. I think students' safety is being impacted, students' education is being impacted. Um, I will tell you, Kate Collins won both basketball games. Last night, they won by over 25 points. I think if students can't focus, if they can't be supported in their classrooms completely, they're not going to be able to succeed in the extracurricular events that they participate in, and it's gonna put our kids behind. And I lost my kiss.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak tonight? Well, I thank you all for attending. It was a lovely night, and we get to get out and enjoy this warm weather. Meetings adjourned.